This time that I call this to order, I'll ask our clerk if she would call the row for a quorum, please.
Commissioner Blackmore?
Present.
Commissioner Askew?
Here.
Chairman Whitfield? Here.
Commissioner Stoltz?
Present.
Thank you. All members of the board are here tonight. Okay, we do have our agenda before the board. Is there any modifications or changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blackmore to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved as presented. We do have our minutes from our regular meeting that we held here on February the 23rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM. The clerk has prepared the minutes from that meeting. Do we have any discussion or correction of those minutes? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The minutes are approved as the clerk has prepared. Okay, this time is our public comment time. Is anyone that would like to come forward and speak to the board tonight? Yes, sir. Come up, please. Please state your name, sir.
I'm General Pope. Mark, I got a question for you.
You come around here, sir.
Okay. I guess about three weeks ago or something, a paper article appeared that we got some problems with the fire trucks, with the maintenance of them, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it was in the paper.
I didn't see the article, but I'm familiar.
Can you just give us an update on what's going on, you or Shannon one?
Well, Mr. Pope, I think I'd like to defer that to the fire chief himself and let Mr. Chief Hodge come up and give us an update on what this article was about, chief, if you don't mind, please, sir. He can give us the skinny, right up, right, the long and short of it, real quick.
How are you?
Fine. How are you doing?
Well, I didn't see the article either. Did anybody, anybody else see it?
It was basically that after our meeting, it came out, we just got what we talked about in that meeting.
About the pumpers down.
Yeah, right. So, so update. Currently, we have, at that point in time, we had had six in service on our, on our pumpers. We now have 12. So, a lot of progress since last few weeks.
Right.
And then looking at, in, in meeting with the shop and with Chairman Whitfield, the future, the immediate future looks pretty good as far as getting a few things fixed. We do have some that have to have total engine rebuilds and some, some more pump work, but we're looking to get two or three more out hopefully next week, back in service.
Did you say you got 12 now?
We got 12 now.
In service?
In service.
Okay.
We have 23 total.
Okay, and the paper says you hit six.
That was at that point in time, yes, sir.
Out of 23, we had six in service at that time.
Well, at least you're going in the right direction.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and so you think we'll continue in the right direction.
I'm hoping so, yes, sir. It's a, it's a very old fleet.
Okay.
We're waiting on three new pumpers to come in that'll help us out.
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Hey, do you have one, I thought three new ones might be here, chief?
Looks like, looks like we are traveling to South Dakota. It looks like supposed to be about the third week of April.
Okay.
That'll be for the final inspection. They'll then have to bring them down to Metro Atlanta, go to their shop and some final things. So, we're probably looking at end of May in service date. By the time we do training on them and do the driving in service and get everything on, it'll probably end of May, hopefully.
Okay.
Thank you for that update, Joe.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, we'll move on, and we do have a proclamation, and we appreciate Sheriff Wilson being here with us again this year, because I know this is very dear to, to your situation and to your heart, and so we appreciate you being here tonight. Says proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month. Whereas multiple myeloma is the second most common blood cancer in the world, is a cancer of the plasma cells in the bone marrow and can occur in multiple areas inside the body. And whereas multiple myeloma currently affects more than 140,000 people in the United States, an estimated 35,730 new cases will be diagnosed, and 12,590 deaths will occur from this disease in 2023, according to the American Cancer Society. Whereas every 15 minutes, someone in the U.S. is diagnosed with multiple myeloma, although the cause remains unknown. And whereas multiple myeloma causes a variety of adverse health effects, including the weakness, immune system, anemia, thank you, anemia, kidney damage, and bone deterioration. Whereas once prominently found among those 65 and over, where it continues to be frequently diagnosed, multiple myeloma is increasingly being identified in younger individuals, including those in their 30s, 40s, and 50s. And whereas multiple myeloma is nearly twice as likely to occur in African Americans, and is one of the leading causes of cancer deaths among African Americans, with scientific understanding of the disparity remains unknown. And therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Chairman of Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month in Walker County, and encourage all residents to join me in participating in voluntary activities to support multiple myeloma education and the funding of the research program to find a cure. Signed and sealed the ninth day of March of 2023. Sheriff, would you like to, to speak to the calls, please, sir?
Well, first and foremost, thank you to the board for doing this again this year. March is Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month, has been for many, many years, and we are North Georgia, we are part of the Chattanooga area Multiple Myeloma Networking Support Group. As a matter of fact, they are meeting right now at Memorial Hospital. That's why Linda Hughleley, that some of you have met in previous years, is not here. She leads that support group there at Memorial on the, I guess it's the first Thursday of every month. And, and again, it's, we just appreciate it. I was diagnosed in 2009. The life expectancy is three to five years. I've got 13 and still doing great, and thank the Lord every day for his blessings, for the medical field, the doctors that treated me, and I can stand here and accept this on behalf of everyone. So, I thank you for doing that. And Linda said I need to get a picture again this year.
Yes.
Because she likes to promote it around the Chattanooga area, so.
We'll get Joe to get a picture here from the table.
All right.
This works for you, Joe. All right, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we miss her? Glad you could.
I will. I will, buddy. Thank you.
No, she's got a call. That's yours.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we have, excuse me, a resolution R-013-23. It's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt a fee schedule set forth in the Walker County Landfill Material List and Price Guide, whereas the board desires to establish the fees at the Walker County landfill for the disposal of various materials. And whereas the board has the authority to set aside fees pursuant to the Walker County Code of Ordinance, and whereas the board periodically implements rate changes at the landfill in order to maintain solid waste services. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the fees associated with Walker County Landfill Material List and Price Guide set forth shall be, excuse me, shall be set forth in Exhibit A attached here to and made part of, so resolved and adopted the ninth day of March. And so, board members, before you, you have the revised fee structure. There's a lot of different information on here, but majority of the information on here did not change from the prior year, but I can call your attention down there, about two-thirds down, where you see a material code O-1, which is Household Garbage MSW. That currently is $46 a ton. Recommendation is to take that to $49 a ton. And then number 12, to below that, Household Garbage MSW Out of County, would go from $52.50 to $56.50, which would be $4 per ton. And then if you look down at the bottom, the last line, number 14, CND Transferred Out of County, would also be an increase of $4 to $56.50. Our vendor, Republic Services, is going up on us, and we have received that notification, so we're trying to cover our overhead and cost of our operation, and just trying to stay balanced and stay whole, so we can stay within our, our budget. And within the first quarter of our fiscal year, our revenue over expenses, we're at about a $1,600 above water, so to speak, $1,666. So, with this increase, if we try to absorb that increase, we're gonna, we're gonna be at a loss at our landfill operations. So, all of these other categories, the batteries, mattresses, mulch, all of those different things, tires, all stay the same. It's just trying to adjust that municipal solid waste. That's about a 6% adjustment from where we currently are, and our vendor's going up about four and a half percent on their current charges.
And will, will they just go up once a year, or is there a time in the year where they can say, hey, we gotta jump again?
Pretty much, they go up once a year, we have seen historically. And also, even at those rates, we're still below our neighbors, so to speak, that have transfer stations. So, Catoosa County recently moved to $60 a ton, so this would put us at 49. And then Dade County is $56.50 a ton regardless, and so that just matches up to what theirs is for any out-of-county. We do get some people that, our landfill's closer, even if they live in Dade County, they're actually closer to come over, so that, going up $4 on that for the out-of-county keeps that par with where they are. But, you know, we're just trying to stay revenue neutral as much as we can.
Payne, could, would you come up for a minute? I got, I want to ask a couple of questions, please, sir.
Payne Gillis is gonna come up. He's our landfill director.
Sir, I just, just in looking at it, and I, listen, both the chairmen's telling us on the fee schedule, have you, is this gonna keep us where we need to be, or is there any other adjustments that need to be made? I mean, we want to do a one-time, one-stop shop. And I, I realize that we didn't go up on any, any, some of the other things. I was just curious if, you know, if we, if we needed to, or if we're looking at anything, or do you anticipate any changes in the, in the near future? Like, kinda like Mr. Hart said, do they go up once, or can they go up again, or?
Yeah, July 1st is the renewal date of the, of their contract, and they have to inform us at least 60 days prior to that renewal date of any price increase. So, that's why it usually rolls around this time of year. We're holding, we seem to be holding our own with those other rates. And compared to, you know, the other landfills in the area, they seem to be competitive or within, within reason. And we never really know what's coming down the road.
Right.
As far as tonnage goes.
Yeah.
But we, you know, we're, we're maintaining a pretty good average right now of our tonnage on a monthly, monthly basis, so.
Okay, so you're, so you're good with where the fees, where everything is?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So, I mean, hey, one more question.
Sure.
I'll talk to Payne about this today, Sheriff. Do our, do our tipping fees at the landfill support their budget, or is there, or is there more money put towards that? In other words, is it self-supporting out there?
Well, last year, we had an increase as well.
Right.
And we did it later in the year, so based off our budget cycle, we were, we were behind the curve. And so, once the depreciation was applied, we actually showed a $175,000 loss last year. But that's why I looked at first quarter this year, because all those numbers are in, to see where we are. So, that rate adjustment last year helped us get to about a par value.
Okay.
But knowing that this is coming.
Yep.
If we don't make an adjustment, then we're gonna be in a negative number again.
So, so the goal is to have the tipping fees support the budget?
Yes, because this being a, an operation that should be self-supported, it's set up with its own budget, its own balance sheet, home income statement, and landfills from an accounting, governmental accounting standpoint are made to stand on their own and to be self-supported, self-sufficient.
All right.
Good question. Any other questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution with the rate schedule?
Yes, I'm moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The rate schedule is passed. Okay, also under new business, we have a resolution R-1423 to adopt an anti-harassment policy that's attached. I wasn't planning to read the entire policy unless we feel we needed to, but I will read the resolution. Resolution R-14-23, a resolution of Walker County Board of Commissioners to adopt an anti-harassment policy. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, the board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas the board has, has determined it is describable and necessary to update the county's anti-harassment policy to clarify the responsibilities of each employee to not participate in promote or support any form of workplace harassment. Whereas the board has determined it is necessary to clarify the definition of workplace harassment and sexual harassment, as well as provide for a compliant procedure. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the Walker County Board, excuse me, the Walker County Government Anti-Harassment Policy attached here to marked Exhibit A is incorporated by references hereby adopted and shall be implemented immediately. Be it further resolved, any other resolution or county policy addressing workplace harassment prior to this date that is now in conflict with any of the provisions of the resolution is hereby repealed, so resolved the ninth day of March 2023. Internally, we did look at several different anti-harassment policies that was out. Our attorney contacted our, our helpline through ACCG. They have an HR helpline, and that is facilitated through a law firm that ACCG supports. It's Gerard Davis Law Firm as well. And so, this was a policy that they had vetted out over the years, that they gave to us as a policy, that we basically just had to insert our county information. And attorneys looked this over as well, and wanted to present this to y'all tonight.
So, this is a, this is a model from ACCG? Basically, it's a model, and like I said, we inserted that?
Yeah, this is a model that was created for local governments by Gerard Davis Law Firm. So, we were able to get this through our ACCG relationship. We can use that HR resource without it costing the county any additional funds.
And when we can, it's great. When we can do that.
Yes, just on HR issues.
And I'd like to ask our HR manager, are you comfortable with this, this anti-harassment policy? Have you had a chance to look it over, Ms. Payne?
Yes, I have, and I'm coming up, sorry.
Please.
Yes, I've looked at it, and I had modeled one for the chairman earlier this year, early, late last year, and the wording is very similar to what I had already put together. So, I feel like it's totally acceptable in my, from my perspective, so.
Ms. Payne, a question for you. How will you convey, I know new employee hires would be, this would be conveyed during the employment initial process.
New hire orientation.
So, how would you convey this to folks who are already employed, so that they're aware of the policy?
Yeah, it's a great question. I would propose that, that I would go out to the managers and do a onsite lesson, learn, learning lesson with either the manager and the naked teller staff, depending on the size of the department and the type of department it is, or I can tell the entire department as a whole. So, whatever the manager thinks is appropriate for their staff, I'll be happy to produce it. But they do need to be educated on it as soon as it gets approved, yeah.
Well, that's a great, well, you say if, if adopted, it goes into effect immediately. So, would we, we go ahead and start scheduling that and probably handle that this next week? Because if we're gonna adopt the policy, they have to be informed on it before we can actually enforce that policy.
Sooner the better.
Yeah, no, I mean, if we adopt it, they don't know about it, then it's, it's null. You can't, you can't enforce it.
They'll have to sign off.
They will, yes, from the training. That's right.
You gotta page for that, and every employee signs it. They've got a copy.
That's right.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. So, once each, any employee, once they sign it, then they would be adherent to the policy.
Yeah, and we would do pretty much any policy like that. Any new policy that's passed by the board, the, the employees would have to be educated by it as soon as possible, and they would sign off on it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let me back up. I messed up.
Need a motion.
I'm sorry.
Need a motion.
I need a motion. I'm sorry. Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried. Sorry about that. I got ahead of myself there.
I was.
Okay, we do have our monthly department statistics for your review, and I'll just hit some of the highlights here. We did have 112 dogs and 21 cats come in. It's great to report our staff's working hard on the outtake of adoptions, rescues, and returns to owners that we didn't have to euthanize any animals this past month, so that's always great news. Our code enforcement, they evaluated 100 properties in compliance, had 21 citations, and was able to close out three cases. Our call for services, fortunately for the fire department, was down over prior month, 445 calls for service handled by 641 units. Unfortunately, we didn't install any smoke alarms this month. That's probably one of the first months I can remember that we did not. So, if there's anybody out there that needs smoke alarms or smoke alarm replacements for their home, they can reach out to the fire headquarters, and they'll have our team come out and do an assessment and put in whatever smoke alarms you need at no cost. It doesn't cost you anything at all. So, that's a great program that we have to try to keep people safe. Excited to report our Mountain Cove Farms has been very busy in January and February with January 35 nights rented out and February 33, so that's really good in the, kind of the dead of the winter to have that many rentals. Also, our single-family home construction, 45 permits pulled in February. That was a big month for us.
A lot.
And then patching potholes, 144 potholes patched in February, and we hope to get going with our new pothole patching truck. Hopefully, we'll be in within the next couple of weeks. It's in transit from the manufacturer from Florida, and we hope to just have it going just as soon as possible to be able to start putting hot patches down. So, we're very excited about that. Transit is very busy with 2,779 transit trips, so they continue to be very, very active in our transit. At this time, that ends our regular agenda items, and we'll go to our commissioner comments. So, District One, Commissioner Blackmore.
Appreciate everybody coming out, if I can help in any way, call, text, or email. Also, we did have a partner with Charlie Stevens a couple weeks ago and had a softball tournament in Rossville, and the shelter came out, and we were able to adopt a couple pets. And, and they, they've been more involved in our communities and going to events and bringing animals and giving away microchipping certificates and helping with spay and others. So, very good to see them out and been active.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. Askew?
Oh, yes, sir. So, Saturday, April 1st is the Anna Haney Memorial Cleanup Day in Chickamauga. It's a, it's the cleanup day there. We encourage anybody that's at Holland-Watson Helicopter Park, encourage anybody that wants to to come out. And it starts at 8:30 a.m. Saturday morning. Come out and lend a hand if you can. Also, our Walker County Farmers' Market's getting ready to fire off. They've got their vendors meeting on the 12th, and then again on the 15th of April. I think if you're gonna be a vendor, you gotta attend one of those meetings, I do believe.
Okay.
And I'd also like to ask Bobby Snyder and Chief Hodge to come up and give us just a little bit of a recap of what all we did during this intensive, these storms, high winds, and power outages and all that we've had. I think we've got some, need to kind of touch on that and let everybody know just how busy you guys have been, how much we appreciate what y'all have done. While they're coming up, I'd also like to acknowledge, you said how many new, on your report, I didn't, I wasn't looking on our new home starts over 45?
Forty-five.
Our building official back there, John, we appreciate what you guys are out there doing. You're keeping these projects moving forward every day. And I think we've got quite a bit of building going on up in District One, coming out of the ground, and got a lot happening. So, thanks to all departments, but, but thanks to you guys too as well for what you're doing. Bobby, if you would, please.
Well, we started getting calls in there on all the trees coming down, and Fire Department, they go out and they cut quite a few of them. They get more than quite a few, the majority of them. It's a, it's a group effort on all that. We had over 46 to 50 roads that were shut down over different times with the trees being all the way across them. We've picked up about 35 to 40 of them at this point. We've got, we found a lot more out there when we went out. That's been added to the list. We've added, I know, 15 to 20 besides what was called in through 911, just in travels. We've got about, I think there's 12 to 15 left to try to get next week. But they, some of these roads are spending nearly all day on trying to do cleanup. There's so many trees on it that it's a lot of extensive work. They're doing all they can with what we got. I mean, we're keeping the equipment as running and motivated as possible. We, in the future, when we can, need to try to look into some high lift tailgates for the dump trucks or for new trucks, period. Payne can justify on that. When we get over to the landfill dumping off, if, on the tandems, we leave tailgates up because it's hard to transport with them down. You break chains. You hit a pothole, hit a bump, you snap a chain, then your whole load's in the road. So, now you've got the road blocked. So, leaving the tailgates up and trying to dump at the landfill, they're getting hung. He's having to bring equipment across to try to help get it unloaded, and it's a lot of issues on that. So, in the future, when we can update some of the dump trucks, I believe the high lift gates would be the best because they hinge back about four foot, and when they're raised up hydraulic, ain't nothing in the way to catch.
That's, that's something we definitely would, we move forward, need to look into for sure.
And I don't know how, if they do them on single axles. I, I haven't researched any of that, but I know the state's got them on theirs, and they got sanding equipment that's in them. We will have to redo something on our sanding equipment if we do stuff like that, too, because our sanders, we pull the tailgates off to put them in.
Well, just be sure and give, give kudos to the guys that were out there in, in the rain and that, and still that are out there working and getting the job done.
Yeah.
We appreciate what they're doing, and we'll, we'll look into that as we start looking into the future. But thank you for, for all that y'all did.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Sir.
Yeah, so from an emergency management perspective, I'd like to thank all the public safety entities with the law enforcement, EMS, fire.
Dispatch.
Absolutely, dispatch.
Dispatch probably covered up.
Dispatch were extremely busy. Citizens that came out to help, they, there were, we were, we were out for several hours. A lot of citizens took time and equipment and helped everyone out, helping their neighbors. So, a lot of teamwork involved and community effort involved from 2:00 p.m. to about 6:30. The fire department and with the road department dispatched on just under 70 tree down, tree-related, tree. tree-related, tree of power lines, trees over the road, trees against houses. That's a lot of calls for our limited staff and, and resources, but, well, we, we managed to make it through again with help from citizens and, and everybody working together. During that time, the nine-one-one center caddied up, entered in a hundred, one hundred and thirty-three calls for service, that's law enforcement and EMS, everything involved in that period of time. So it was extremely busy with those straight-line winds over that, over that stretch. You know, it only lasted fifteen, twenty minutes through the, through the rough part, but then, as they're, they'll have to, they'll have to deal with trees that were damaged that we don't even, we don't know yet with the root systems, and, and we get more wind and, and rain again that softens up, and, and more wind. I mean, I, I make light of it sometimes, but Walker County, I, I really think it's the tree-down capital of the world. We run tree downs every day, every day in this county. But we had a lot of help, it went well, there was, nobody was injured as far as I know in any of the efforts. Also, wanna thank Company Eight, it's the state, the, the fire crew from the state prison. I worked with them down, down Round Pond on about nine different trees down on Round Pond, and they, they really did some, really did a lot of good things, so, you know, wanna give them a, a thank you that they don't, sometimes they don't often get, so. But I, I thought it went well. You guys got a lot of work still ahead, but you got any questions, anything else?
I just wanted to get a little update, and, and I do thank you, Chief, for mentioning, and I will say this, both of you mentioned citizens' involvement, and that says a lot about our community. When we get in a bind, people do come out and lend a hand to each other, and it's a blessing to be here, and we need to, don't need to take that for granted, any of us, we need to be proud of it and get out and do a little more where we can to help, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
I mentioned Skip Rossell with Power Board.
Yes.
He teamed up with us on a couple that was in a strategic area that they was hung, and if we cut them, they was gonna get into power lines, and we hooked up with him, and he sent a team out.
Awesome.
Our team worked side by side with them, and we got all them down. That was over on Lake Howard today, and he's good about doing that, Skip is, on any of them, anytime through the year. And, and like you said, the community, they've been out with tractors, asking for logs and will cut, and some of them we had to haul, and they'll take the logs and use them for firewood, so that helps, too, to speed up the cleanup.
Awesome.
I appreciate everything they all do.
Good.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, yeah, many thanks to y'all, the Power Captain, everybody did a great job of that. I know in my area, it was not really damaged at all, and I thought, what's the big deal? And I came to the fair the next day, and I thought, oh, I see, yeah, that blood thing. Shannon mentioned Terry Hambrick. He was a deputy sheriff in effect for thirty-four, thirty-four years, and if you didn't know him, he was just, he was just a great guy. I went to school with him and just be in prayers for his family. He was just a, a model citizen and a model employee and a model law enforcement officer for our county, so we'll miss him great.
Be dearly missed.
You will. Robert?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and appreciate all the hard work that the county employees do. Blake and Bobby, just thank y'all so much, our Sheriff's Department, City of Lafayette employees, everyone did a great job on the cleanup, and I actually saw some of your guys, Bobby, down on Kaufman Springs the other day, from where a couple of huge trees were down, and I told them thank you for the hard work, and so y'all just did a phenomenal job. And Terry Hambrick, I'm gonna reiterate what, what Brian said, I went to school with him as well, and he always called me classmate every time I'd see him, "Hey, classmate," and just always had a smile on his face. Thirty-four-year career law enforcement officer, wonderful law enforcement officer. He touched a lot of lives with the Chance Program, and just a super guy, so thoughts and prayers to the, to the Hambrick family. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll also add a reminder about our Tire Amnesty Day coming up on April the twenty-second, Saturday, April the twenty-second, where citizens of Walker County will be able to bring up to about a dozen tires. They need to be passenger or light truck tires, and they're pretty strict with us at the recycler, that those tires need to be cleaned out. So if you've had them sitting outside and they got water, leaves, or debris in them, we're asking everyone to clean those out the best you can. We cannot accept any tires that have wheels on them, or, you know, steel mounted up on the rims. These have to be just the individual tires, and they have to be either an automotive tire or a light truck tire. This is not a program for off-road tires or heavy truck tires, tractor tires and things. And the reason the, this is so strict is we received a grant from Georgia EPD, and we have to stay within the, the parameters of that grant in order to receive these funds. And so, we literally have to write down the size of every tire that's loaded, and so we have some of our staff members there with clipboards, literally writing down every size of the tire. So it's a pretty intense process to, to do, but it's well worth it for our citizens, because it's an opportunity where you can bring tires on the twenty-second of April, and they will be disposed of in a recycle manner, and it won't cost you anything at all to bring those tires in. So you can bring up to twelve tires on April the twenty-second, and that also happens to be Earth Day, so it's a great day to clean up our community. The more tires we can get out of our community, the better from the standpoint, because, you know, tires hold water and you get mosquitoes in tires, and so the more tires we can get from outside the environment, the better our community will be and have less mosquitoes.
Bring them to the landfill required?
Yeah, the landfill on Marble Top Road, yes.
Mr. Chairman, what's the, of the hours, or, I guess what my question is, is, and Payne, you, y'all, y'all can piggyback on this, but do we have a, a huge turnout? In other words, is there a certain set of hours, and if people are waiting in a line, how, you know, people, 'cause when they load them up and come, and I picked up tires, I pulled them out of the ditches here for several years under a tire grant years ago for the county, and that, that was my job.
Yeah.
And I know that if they don't make it to the landfill, I know where they end up. So what's the, what is that procedure, Payne?
Well, the amnesty runs from eight to three.
Yeah, so we need, you know, we do have a lot of people that, that will line up early in the morning, so people that maybe wanna come mid-morning or afternoon, they're usually are the biggest influx of people, you know, in that eight, nine o'clock, so if people can come later in the day, that's usually easier to get in, because we normally in the past have had people line up down the road, and that's one reason, too, we're asking everybody to limit to just twelve, so we don't have people bringing major truck loads and it taking a long time to, to offload, and that way, we can work within the dollars that we have to work with, with the grant, so we can help as many people in the community as possible. And hopefully, now that they've got this program back going again after the COVID era, hopefully, we can do this every year and keep this going. So if we're not able to get all of your tires this year, hopefully, next year, you can bring them, and we can keep our county cleaned up.
Could I say one more thing?
Yes.
I forgot while I was up there, 'cause I was trying to scrap all that. I want to say, I appreciate y'all, my workers, all my guys, they've all been phenomenal through this event that we had, and every one of them, they don't care to come when you call.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
I meant to say that when I was up there, but I'm sorry, I forgot.
Got a good team, thank you. All right, do we have a need to go into executive session? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir. You got a motion to adjourn?
Is that a question or a statement?
No, that isn't a motion.
I thought that was a question.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Hart, and a second by Commissioner Askew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, men. Yeah, I thought you just.
No, bro.
I said, motion. Were you the driver?